Yeah, you know, just often it shows the upper for all the sidewalks and curbs, everything.
Sign another one. I decided to spell out his name instead of her initials.
Okay. Was this for us?
Just seeing how it's a little bit actiony.
Pretty much. Okay.
It's coming over here. They are a little fast.
Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready whenever you are.
Ah ha. It's just seven. Looks like I'm gonna have to get his attention. Oh, there he comes.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I want to call to order this meeting of the Capitola City Council. I want to welcome everyone who's here in the audience. Thanks for coming out on this sunny June afternoon. And also want to welcome everyone who's watching on television, either live on the web or the recorded rebroadcast. So let's begin with a roll call, Sue.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Norton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bator.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Story.
Here. Next we have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Bortha.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Next we have introductions on the agenda and we, it's always a pleasure for us to introduce new staff persons. And tonight we have the introduction of a senior accountant, Danielle Grindi. And Tori, you want to lead off?
Good evening, Mayor. Our new senior accountant is Danielle Grindi. She'll be working as in accounting operations overseeing the payroll and revenue receipting functions. She'll be assisting with the budget as well as the CAFR and special financial studies. She has a bachelor's degree in accounting from CSU Stanislas. She's a certified public accountant. Most recently, she worked at the County of Santa Cruz as an auditor three, where she was responsible for working on the CAFR, participating in some projections and also auditing. Prior to that, she's held positions as staff accountant, accountant, and controller. She's worked at Oak Valley Hospital District, Stockton Jet Center, and San Joaquin Delta Community College. I also thought it might be an interesting fact that she worked for the Gallo Glass Company, which was originally affiliated with Gallo Wines. However, she thought it might be more interesting that she worked for a CPA firm that managed the books for A.J. Spanos, the San Diego Chargers.
I actually did their taxes and their financial statements and I wanted to cry when I saw how much money they made. I'm really excited to be here. Thank you for having me. I'm not really sure what else to say.
Well, thank you, Danielle. It's really a pleasure to have you join the team here in Capitola. Sounds like you have a world of experience and great credentials and so I'm impressed and amazed that our staff was able to attract you and secure you, so welcome.
They worked really hard. And then the beach was nice, too.
Okay, well, I'm sure it was mostly the staff that brought you here.
Yeah.
So, okay. Well, welcome very much. It's a pleasure to have you here. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have a report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Story. The council had three items on closed session this evening. They're listed on the council's posted agenda. The council first had a discussion with the city attorney's office and the city manager, Assistant City Attorney Susan Barisoni, concerning an item of potential litigation. And you received a status report on that matter and gave us instructions with regard to pursuing that matter in the future. No reportable action in closed session. The council also discussed the pending litigation, Ray Leonard versus, Ray Ellen Leonard versus the City of Capitola. It's an ADA compliance case concerning the Rispin property. We provided a status report on that case and the council gave us instructions with regard to the ongoing defense of that lawsuit, but took no reportable action in closed session. The council also had scheduled a conference personnel evaluation of the city attorney, but decided that was not necessary and did not conduct that evaluation in closed session. That's the end of my oral report.
All right. Thank you, John. The next item is additional materials, identification of additional materials that may not have been in the agenda packet. I noticed that we had three here as we came in this evening. One was an email from the Capitola Village businesses concerning the open streets that took place on May the 3rd. There's also an email from Molly Ordning concerning the open streets. Lastly, there's an email from TJ Welch concerning the world surfing reserves, which is, and both of those items are on our agenda for later in the evening. Next we come to additions and deletions to the agenda. Are the staff, any requested additions or deletions? Seeing none, councilmembers? Any requests for additions or deletions? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you have something, please come up.
Good evening. My name is Adam Samuels. I live on Depot Hill. I have two separate items I'd like to bring up. One is a quick item related to the junior guards in the beginning of the program. We looked at the website and one of the comments on the website, it's really great to read that there were instructions given and requests for people to park in the new parking lot. And that fact that we're giving folks stickers is really great. But there's a note for parents with older children that basically I wanted to read, which is, "Encourage your junior guard to ride his or her bike, walk, take the bus, or carpool. If you have to drop your child off, try to avoid circulating through the village. Use these alternative drop-off locations, above Hoots Beach Stairs, west of the wharf, and above the Depot Hill stairs." Now, the Depot Hill stairs requires you come up Escalona, go back and around, and basically loop through the entire neighborhood. It's a concern and I just think we want to raise that awareness as we look to see how the traffic changes are going to be affected by the parking lot. You know, what we can do about that would be great. The second thing is I just want to let you all know, you probably are aware of, I've seen the draft environment impact report, which a lot of us are looking at pretty carefully. And there's two things that we have noticed that we just want to raise awareness about. One is specifically related to the traffic study. It seems that the measure being used for traffic doesn't actually reflect the type of streets that we have in the neighborhood. They don't reflect the 30-foot wide street with no sidewalks. The comparisons seem to be relevant to streets that have two full lanes and sidewalks. And if that's the case, I think the comparisons are not going to be valid. And the second thing of concern is, I'm losing my mind. The second thing of concern really has to do with, Kath, I'm losing my mind. Oh, thank you. It was actually a third then. We asked about the conditional use permit that was first imposed after 2000. And Rich sent us a copy of the document earlier this week, which was dated 2001. The document had a three-year term and it's never been renewed. And it turns out that that is still considered enforceable in ballot, which I don't think is consistent with the intent of the council when it was first implemented and which argues, I think, for that this conditional use permit should be looked at. In the application, the developer talked about how they wanted to change the conditional use permit, but there's just some real questions. Given there have been violations over the years and there has been a lack of enforcement since this expiration, we just want to make sure that the council's aware of this and perhaps there's a need for broader review of the conditional use permit for the Monarch Cove. Thanks.
Thank you, Anna.
What was the third, what was the third thing? Did you say, did you say?
I remember I whispered in Katz's.
Was it Ingress Egress Escalona Drive?
That is part of the traffic study, but that wasn't the thing I was thinking of. Thank you.
If you think of it later.
Will do.
Hello, I'm Kathleen Addison. I live on Depot Hill. I think I know all of you now because I've been bending your ear on several subjects. I'm here tonight to ask that we open that conditional use permit again. I was involved when that first happened. I think Stephanie, you were pretty actively involved at that time. We had so many violations. There was a garbage dump next to me where all of the wedding refuse was discarded and there was no garbage pickup for three months. And that prevented me from opening my windows on one side of the house. Over the years, things had gotten better for a while. However, a lot of the getting better is the neighbors' tolerance for pain. We are frequently disturbed by the noise and by the traffic, either people rushing to the event because they're late in their cars or driving inebriated from the event afterwards. We have a very quiet neighborhood that doesn't need traffic calming right now because it's, the streets are small, the sightlines are narrow. And people drive respectfully, except for people going to and from those weddings. So I would like to ask right now that we consider reopening and reviewing that conditional use permit based on violations. Some of the violations are noise. Just two weeks ago, it was going till after nine o'clock. I walked down to make sure it wasn't a neighborhood graduation party. It was people at the wedding with amplified music. And as I walked back, one of the guests was urinating in a neighbor's yard. He was in wedding attire, so I knew it was not just a neighborhood wanderer. We put up with a lot and we've been pretty patient, not wanting to ruin someone's wedding day. So we don't want to call all the time, but it raises the question, who's monitoring this? And while in the conditional use permit, it does say there would be monitoring, it's been my experience that there is not a lot of monitoring from the Monarch Cove management. And I don't think necessarily the city has the staff to continually monitor and we have a lot of new police that aren't familiar with this at all. One of my neighbors called, Andy Armanino, called Monday for an event that happened just this last Saturday. And he tried to explain how loud it was and the officer was really nice and polite, but knew nothing about any of the regulations. So I think it's time, we've kind of drifted long enough. They've mentioned that they would be willing to abide by some of the conditional use permit in their proposal. So I think that's enough information perhaps from them and with the various things that have happened to reopen that. One of the things that I have found most egregious is for years they were denied a parking lot on their site. And they actually, without any permissions, wiped out all the butterfly feeding and marked and wood chipped and marked 20-spot parking lot in the middle of basically butterfly area. And they did that after years of being denied the permission to have a parking lot. And there was no repercussions for that. So I think perhaps the monitoring has fallen by the wayside and I ask that we keep this open. One of the things about Ingress Egress on the next subject on the traffic study is many of the places that were marked are smaller streets. But the place that's the problem on Depot Hill is the Escalona Monterey intersection. Getting off the hill is very difficult. And I think perhaps the traffic study should reexamine that because I think if we had a disaster, it would be impossible to get people off the hill. And when the fire department was discussed, it was discussed down at the resort end. We didn't really ask the fire examiner to look at what would happen at that Escalona Monterey intersection. So I would ask that that be reexamined as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kathleen. See anyone else wish to address the council on items not on the agenda? Adam, did you remember, I think you had a few seconds left on your time, so.
So the thing I remembered was, in the report, which is awesome, there's 330 pages printed and there's another 800 some odd pages on the CD. And as I read through or scanned through that, I could see a huge number of the comments that were written, the letters that were written, the emails that were written. But there were a couple of things that I noticed that were missing. One was, there's no summary of the public meeting that was held, that we had 70 some odd people here in this room. And we were told there were written notes being taken, but they're not included in there, so I'd like to have those included. And there's no work product, if you will. So all of those comments got captured and then the consultant represents them in the draft EIR as, you know, people asked for or people said this. But there's no mapping between these pages and pages of comments to what's actually in the EIR to indicate how they got from what was written to what's actually being reported or responded to. And I think that's going to make life complicated for everyone to try to see, is everything represented? I'm going to try to do an audit to see, but it's needed. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak, address the council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comments portion of the meeting and we'll get to city council, city treasurer, staff comments. We'll start with staff comments. Any? Seeing none. A city treasurer?
No comment.
And city council. Yes, Stephanie, why don't you begin?
Got a letter from Michael Olivari that many of us know and had a business here in Capitola for a long time and was a recipient of one of the Chamber of Commerce awards this year. And she said that, she said, "Last year you mentioned being interested in donating to my team in training fundraiser page. I never made it to your office, but I did complete the San Francisco Nike Women's Half Marathon." The hills and charging up them just four months after finishing treatments made me realize more the hills were your life. You just have to keep going regardless. I'm currently in Washington State helping my daughter running now as part of my life. I'm running for the Seattle chapter of Team in Training. Will be running the Nike Women's Half Marathon in San Francisco this October and so forth and so on. So for those of you who know her and if you'd like to contribute to her efforts in the team in training, see me and we will encourage her. And I'm sure she'll be back in this area some day. She has a lot of friends and so forth here and we'll wish her well. That's a great accomplishment.
Dennis?
Yes, you know, Capitola really should have a citizen of the month award and we don't have one, but I'd like to make a nomination for this month. And who that is is Ann Wilson in the fourth grade class from Main Street Middle School. And their heroic saving of the pelican down on Seacliff Beach. And so she is my nomination with her, with all of the fourth graders from Main Street School as the Capitola Citizens of the Month.
Right, right. Thank you, Dennis. Anything else? None? This side? Yeah, fair.
A couple of comments. Had an Ambag meeting last night and at that meeting, a couple of large documents were approved. We finalized the 2035 Metropolitan Transportation Plan for the Sustainable Communities focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And also we approved the final regional housing needs allocation plan, the RENA numbers for 2014 to 2023. And those, all that information is available online at ambag.org.
Thank you, Ann. And Michael?
We had a fabulous car show this last weekend. Many thousands of people came to visit us. Many locals enjoyed the cars, without police incident, I might add, which is nice. Also, we had our first concert last night. Big City Review wowed the crowd as small and powerful as it might have been. And it's summertime, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to let you know that, well, we just had this sanitation district meeting and approved our budget for the coming year. And predominantly, we work on the largest leaky lines to get those fixed so that we take care of the biggest problems first. So we did, as you know, Park Avenue and Wesley Street sewer and that was a big, long, complicated project this last year. This year, we're going to be doing a big project on Felt Street and in 17th. And then we're going to be doing the project through the Brookville Terrace area and down into Capitola to replace that line. And they're also going to be replacing the pump station that crosses Soquel Creek and we're focusing on that this year. There was some grant money for water quality and that's one of the focuses of the Regional Water Quality Control Board to protect water bodies. So if you have a sewer line running through there, we want to make sure that it's not leaking. So we're going to be, we've checked the lines and we're going to be, we're going to be replacing the line underneath Soquel Creek and San Lorenzo Creek. And there's a river, essentially. So anyway, we, I will have this binder upstairs, which is the list of all of our capital improvement projects. If you're curious to know about a particular neighborhood or a particular area, you can look it up in here. And we do move things around. We do have Bay Avenue to the Village on Capitola Avenue sewer and that is scheduled for 2016 and 17. And so something happens there sooner and we need to move things around a little bit. We can certainly do that.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I want to announce that next Wednesday, June 18th, our police department will be participating in the Special Olympics torch run, which will start at 11:30 in front of the City Hall building. And so if anyone's available and would like to give them a hearty kickoff, please come. And if you'd like to donate to the Special Olympics, can folks get that information on our website to be able to do that? Yes, I'm getting a nod from the police chief. So if you'd like to donate to the Special Olympics, go on our website and you'll be directed to the proper place. So, and also I want to thank the police department for participating in that torch run. So with that, we'll move on to boards, commissions, and committee appointments. And tonight we have one appointment to consider. This is the appointment to the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County. And the recommended action is to make an appointment, confirm appointment. And let's begin with a staff report.
Yes, I have that. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The, tonight is the appointment to the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County. And Capitola's representative Cynthia Finley, she goes by Finn, resigned effective June 1st of this year. So staff sent out a notice on the website and posted, we have an opening, sent it to the media. And the Community Action Board operates programs that assist low-income residents to move out of poverty focusing on four service areas. Job training, employment services, housing and homeless services, immigration assistance, and community building. And the board is made up of five members and those five members is either elected And the board is made up of five members and those five members is either elected official or a city representative from the City of Santa Cruz, Watsonville, Capitola, and two representatives of the Board of Supervisors. And we've received two applications, one from Jacques Petran and he filed within the application period, and then one from Christine Peterson we received after the close of the application period. And so it's open for discussion and appointment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there questions from the council on Sue's report? Seeing none, I'm going to, are members of the public, is anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back for action and deliberation. And, I mean, before we begin, I think I will announce that my wife works for the Community Action Board, so I'm going to not vote on this particular appointment to their board. So what is the will of the council? Is there a motion to approve or one of the applicants or? Is there?
I'm not speaking up because I haven't had, I know Jacques personally, but I haven't had a chance to see the other candidate or meet with the other candidate because of the timeliness of the application. So I wouldn't mind this being delayed till the next meeting.
Is there any interest on other council members to maybe continue this until the next meeting so that folks have an opportunity to maybe contact the applicants if they wish? Okay, I think that sounds like a good pursuit. Can we have a motion to continue the item, please?
So move?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes 4-0-1 abstention. Next, we come to the consent calendar. These are administrative matters that will be handled with one action unless a member of the public or a council member wishes to pull an item. Does a member of the public wish to pull any item?
All move consent?
Second.
Seeing none, there's a motion, second, to pass the, all the consent items. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, which will bring us to general government public hearings. The first item, A, is to consider adopting a resolution approving the proposed 2014-15 fiscal year budget for the City of Capitola, general fund, the Capitola Successor Agency, and the Capitola Improvement budgets. And the recommended action is to adopt the resolution approving the 14-15 budgets. We'll begin with a staff report. Yes, hi.
Good evening. As Mayor Story indicated, this is to approve a resolution adopting the fiscal year 14-15 budget. The attached resolution contains items that have been adjusted in the last three budget sessions for just a negative impact of $800. This will leave us with $198,000 general fund balance as well as reserve levels of $2.8 million at the end of fiscal year 14-15.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, that was short and sweet. Of course, I mean, this is the culmination of, you know, we've had a series of special meetings concerning the budget. There's been exhaustive discussion here at the council sessions and with staff. So this is something that we've been working on and it's just now culminating in the final adoption of the budget and so.
If you would like, we have a couple of slides that will just revisit the numbers if you'd like to see that.
Well, if you can quickly put them up there, just in case there's any member of the public here that would like to see them and maybe people out at home could maybe just see an overview of the budget.
And I have a general question, maybe Jamie can answer. What's the purpose of the appropriations limit? It's just an exercise that the state has us go through to set a number there for budgeting purposes that we don't use or follow or we just turn in to the state?
You know, I actually don't know the history on the GAN limit, the appropriations limit, and why it came about. What it is, is it's a formula that is, that we're required to complete every year, basically setting the maximum allowable revenue and tax revenue that the city can collect. And it's based on a formula that comes down from the state and our population. So it is a number we calculate every year. It is about twice as much, twice as high as our current budget. I once asked the question if there was any city in the state that approaches their GAN limit and I haven't been able to find one that does, so I think frankly, it's mostly a meaningless exercise.
Well, and I shouldn't say we don't follow it. We do, we do follow it. It's not like, but it's not like we talk about it and say, "What's the GAN limit this year?" You know, it's just one of those bureaucratic things that, you know, I think it's kind of useless.
Well, and frankly, for the other 500 cities in the state too, it proves equally useless because I don't think it actually regulates the tax revenues that any city receives, as far as I know. So, you know, my guess is it was put in place at some point, at some compromise, some budget compromise, but practically speaking, it doesn't matter.
Go ahead, Tony.
In addition to the regular proposed budget, these are the adjustments that were made as a result of the budget study sessions. We added additional funding to community groups, increased the funding for ADA maintenance projects, some path maintenance, as well as the net transfer to the facilities fund was adjusted to $17,000. This includes differences in a recommended allocation from the Finance Advisory Committee to move $25,000 from the facilities fund to reserves, as well as some changes to defund a bridge study and transfer more money for the purposes of wharf maintenance. There's additional funding for museum, as well as more of a correction for the chamber, and some adjustments to the parking fund to help offset some of the changes that were made in the budget. Just in summary, when you see the impact on fund balance, you'll see a negative 461. However, what that represents primarily is the $475,000 transfers to the reserves. At the very end of the year, we're estimated to have a fiscal year ending fund balance of $198,000 within the general fund.
Was that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the council on the budget for next year, 14-15? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back. What's the will of the council on the budget? Are you ready to adopt it?
Motion to adopt the budget.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff, for pulling us through the budget deliberations. Next, we come to item 10B, which is consider appointing Anthony Candati as the city attorney effective April 1, 2015, and consider approving the Fourth Amendment to the Agreement of City Attorney Services with Atchison, Berisoni, Candati, and Cavasovich in the amount of The recommended action is to approve the contract. And Lisa, you going to start us off with this?
I am. I'm going to take these two items separately and I'm going to start with the actual agreement. This is the Fourth Amendment to our agreement. As you may recall, we've had, used the firm since 2001, 2002. The rates that they have suggested, $133,560, is the same that we've had since 2010, 2011. And you might recall in 2009, when we were furloughed, we also asked that the city attorney take that furlough as well and they did and they have never restored those rates. So, like I said, these rates are from 2010, 2011. So we are, and it is in the new budget, we are recommending that you approve the Fourth Amendment. And then the second portion of this staff report is to appoint a new city attorney from the firm, Tony Candati, who is present here this evening, because unfortunately, we've had the announcement of the retirement of our longtime city attorney, John Berisoni. And we're going to be, miss you terribly, if I might add my own personal comments. But in so doing, we do need to appoint and the resignation date is for March 31, 2015. So the effective date for the appointment would be April Fool's Day, April 1, 2015. And staff is recommending that appointment as well. And as you see, Mr. Candati is here if you would like to ask him any questions. And that's all for my report.
All right, thank you, Lisa. And I think maybe I'll ask first if there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, Tony, John, do you want?
I'll let Tony introduce himself.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Story, members of the city council. First of all, the April 1 start date is purely a coincidence, but it's really an honor and a privilege for me to have the opportunity to serve as your city attorney and to succeed my partner, John Berisoni, in that regard. I have worked on and off with City of Capitola for quite a few years, but I'm really looking forward to doing so on a more regular basis. And I also appreciate the several months' advance notice of the appointment. It gives me plenty of time to prepare for it. So thank you very much. I'm happy to respond to any questions or comments from council members, but otherwise, again, thank you and I look forward to working with all of you.
All right, are there questions? Seeing none. Well, congratulations. Thank you, Tony, and especially to you, John. Congratulations on your retirement. And I just have to say, in all the years that I've been on the council, it's really been reassuring to have your guidance through some very difficult issues and times. And so I think you have a well-deserved retirement and I hope you move on to great and wonderful things in the next phase of your life. But, and it's also comforting that you have someone in your firm so we have that continuity representation, which I think is very important. And so to be able to hand off the torch, so to speak, to Tony and so, and we look forward to seeing that transition happen over the next several months and just congratulations. And so, any other comments by council members? I mean, I know we'll have many more months of working with John and we can maybe, you know, have another special goodbye for him and, you know, another time, but seeing none. I think that discussions on the recommended action, which is to approve the contract and appoint Tony as the city attorney effective April 1, 2015.
So move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next, we come to item C, which is a review of the Open Streets in the Village, which was held on May the 4th, 2014. The recommended action by the council is just to accept the report and provide direction to staff and imagine concerning future Open Street events. So with that, who's going to, Steve, you going to do this one?
I'm going to start us off.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's good to be here tonight. As you mentioned in the reading the agenda, we are here tonight to kind of give a post-event report on the Capitola Open Streets, or Open Streets Capitola, as it was known. It was an event that occurred on Sunday, May 4th. And I'm going to start out with just a slide here that lists the sponsors and supporters of the project. These are the ones that financially gave or gave property that we could use during the event or helped organize events that went on during the event. So all of these contributed in one way or another. I will point out, the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission was a big impetus in this. They actually awarded the grant to Ecology Action for the Open Streets of Santa Cruz County to organize the event for us. As you know, as we've worked with Saskia Lucas from Open Streets, who did all of the work to get the event prepared. So George Dondaro, Executive Director of the Transportation Commission, is in the audience tonight if there's any questions from that. So that really curtails my report and at this point, I'd like to introduce, reintroduce Saskia Lucas from Open Streets, Santa Cruz County, who, like I mentioned, put together the report and has a presentation for you at this time. Jamie, can you?
Good evening. Thanks very much for the opportunity to do this report and I just want to really thank the council for the opportunity to collaborate with the City of Capitola to put on this first-time Open Streets event. And it was really, I want to thank Steve and the other city staff that I worked with, who are a pleasure to work with. And I also want to thank our major funders, the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission, as well as the Coastal Conservancy, and the fiscal nonprofit sponsor of Open Streets, Santa Cruz County, which is Ecology Action. Working in partnership with the City of Capitola, we achieved some mutual goals and those were to pilot a car-free esplanade experience. Secondly, to promote alternative, sustainable forms of transportation, specifically active transportation like bicycling and walking, as well as promoting safer streets for people. And thirdly, a third goal being promoting coastal access and protection, which were, of course, important to the Coastal Conservancy. Open Streets Capitola was a successful, first-time event with a lot of potential. We had a challenge in that we were trying to find a balance between a kind of traditional street fair festival type event and an open space event, a pop-up park, if you will. We, in early conversations with city staff, it was requested that we do the event in such a way that it could be easily repeatable at a lower cost and really, again, striking a balance between maybe not too much programming, meaning music and activities and such. Oh, I'm, I haven't, I haven't started. Yeah, that's okay. Striking a balance between, again, a more of a festival-type environment with lots of activities, lots of booths, et cetera, and really creating an open space for people to do their own activity, just enjoy the environment, that beautiful coastal environment that we have down there and the local businesses, et cetera. And also, of course, we were very mindful of wanting to make this a good experience for the local merchants by not having canopies blocking storefronts and really, and not bringing in any outside vendors so that it would really be an opportunity for the participants to patronize the local businesses. So that was the fine line that we were walking. So this is what we accomplished. This is a picture, the top picture is a picture that I took while I was in the village one day. It was a sunny, busy, bustling day down in the village, one of those days that I was down there to coordinate the event. And the second photograph on the bottom is the same view on Open Streets Day. So we really transformed that space from essentially a kind of a parking lot area to a public park where people got to come together as a community and recreate actively. The participant counts that were done at the event indicate that 6,500 people came through the event. And I'll just, I want to point out that left, or sorry, that right photograph, there was, it was commented that there were a lot of elderly people using walkers, people who were handicapped using wheelchairs, a really diverse group of people, a lot of families, you know, the type of more vulnerable individuals that are not always well-accommodated for. And the participant response was overwhelmingly positive. We did participant surveys, there were about 650 responses and nearly 100% of the respondents said they loved the event and want to see the event happen again. I'll also note that 30% of the respondents were City of Capitola residents. We had a large variety of programming. We had six different musical performances happening, both kind of more in the bandstand area as well as the mercantile courtyard. area as well as the mercantile courtyard. We also had 18 different activities and presenter booths, promoting everything from sustainable transportation, providing resources, marine access and protection activities and information. Of course, the village businesses were on hand for folks who wanted to shop or dine, as well as City of Capitola did outreach at the event on its programs, and also the community grant partner, Capitola Community Grant Partners, who were invited. And we, so, you know, as all good pilot events do, they teach you important information. And one of the important pieces of information that we learned is, you know, in addition to the fact that a lot of people were interested in coming down and experiencing a car-free esplanade on May 4th. We also learned that 100, I mean, that a lot of people wanted to come by bike and by foot. The organization People Power, which donated valet bicycle parking services, reported that they, they parked 191 bicycles. If you were there, you saw just the number of bicycles that could fit in, I think, the space of about five parking spaces. It was pretty incredible. In addition, in addition, 80% of the survey respondents reported walking or bicycling to the event. And I'd like to just suggest that, you know, it'd be wonderful to establish additional bicycle parking in the esplanade area. For example, there's something called a bike corral, which basically is when you take a single parking space and you put five or six racks and that accommodates, you know, 10 to 12 bicycle, oh, sorry, bicycles in the space that you would park one car. And that would really accommodate all these folks who want to come by bicycle to the village. And as a bicyclist myself, I mean, having come to many meetings down at the village, I found myself parking wherever I could, whether it was, you know, a signpost or a fence. There wasn't a lot of options at different points. So, anyway, just a little aside there. So, in turning now to economic impact and merchant feedback, our participant surveys indicated that 50% of respondents, of the participants, discovered a new business. And hopefully, you know, there's, of course, the economic impact on the day, but then there's also the impact that happens after the event in terms of people returning when they've learned about a new shop or a new restaurant that they might like to come back to. And 75% reported spending money at the event. So, there were a couple of different surveys that were conducted. One of the sponsors that you may have noticed in the list that Steve shared was the organization Civilnomics. And they, in addition to sponsoring the event through coordination of the participant survey, they also did a survey of the merchants after the event to gauge their feedback. And then, also, the Business Improvement Area, BIA, conducted a survey. And what was found was that it wasn't, this is another, you know, major takeaway from the event, was that it wasn't a total win for businesses, it wasn't a total loss. And I feel like there's a lot that could be done in the future to even, to make it an even better event for the village merchants. Let's see here. Interestingly, the majority of the businesses surveyed did say that they were supportive of repeating the event, you know, while, and it was also interesting that the restaurants reported and the dining establishment reported doing better sales than overall than the retailers. So, the economic impact was mixed. In terms, we had a lot of really wonderful support in a variety of ways. We had 40 different community members volunteering their time to help make the event happen. Open Streets is a, you know, as you know, is a county-wide program and there are just a lot of people in our community that are interested in these types of events and helping to make them happen. They donated 175 hours of their time. I personally spent, you know, nearly 700 hours coordinating the event. It's always, of course, a lot of work, working in a new jurisdiction and, but time well-spent. And Steve mentioned the different sponsors and supporters. And we, the in-kind match contributions totaled about $12,000, and that doesn't include the City of Capitola. So, again, a lot of, a lot of community support, not only from community members, but also from local businesses. Promoted the event in a variety of ways, through press releases, posters, social media. We also flyer, sent home flyers with schoolchildren at the local schools. Also, the BIA and the Chamber of Commerce helped to get the word out. Of course, our presenters and sponsors helped through their communications channels. We also submitted PSAs to local radio stations and, of course, on the Open Streets website. And we got extensive press coverage. I don't know if you saw just, you know, the number of different events in the Sentinel, in the Good Times, the Register Paharonian, and then, of course, the more local magazines here in Capitola and SoCal. Some of the things that we did to reach out and spread the word in advance of the event was presentations to the business, to the BIA and the Chamber of Commerce, and reaching out to the Capitola Village Resident Association to give announcements out to the community and neighbors. Also, poster distribution in the village. And I personally did that in the closure area, just going door-to-door to every business and just introducing myself and making sure that folks knew about the event, got contact information, and gave them posters. As well, we also wanted to make sure that residents were not surprised by the event and we, in addition, hung door hangers, announcements, so in case they didn't get the word from other channels. So, some of the successes. We tried some new things that I really, that worked out really well. And that, one of them was providing community tables where people could just sit down beachside with their picnic, with their takeout, just to, you know, talk with the neighbors, visit, meet new people. And they were really well-used. Another new activity for Open Streets was a chalk, a community chalk mural. And that was a hit. We also, the kite festival changed its date to coincide with Open Streets Capitola, and they were really complimentary. They're both, you know, very kid, family-friendly events. And presenters that reported that they were able to conduct really good outreach and that they had good community or activity participation. For example, one of the activities that we had in the event or in the, at the, at Open Streets was the children's bicycle obstacle course in the mercantile courtyard. And I wanted to share a quick testimonial from an out-of-town tourist who I happened, who happened to be the, one of the Raffle Prize winners. And she was a mother from San Jose, who happened to be in the village, didn't know about the event in advance. She, she said that she happened on the event with four kids and they just had a blast. And so, I just thought that was good information, that even your out-of-town visitors who might just be surprised by the event can really benefit from the event. So, some of the challenges that we had. There was a planned activity for San Jose Avenue. It's been, it was mentioned in the BIA letter that you have in front of you, that there was a, an underutilized area, which was San Jose Avenue, and I acknowledged that. And part of that has to do with another children's bicycling activity that didn't go as planned. And basically, it was a bicycle chalk drawing activity where there's an attachment for the back of a bicycle that you attach fat chalk to, and you can make designs in the street by riding with a chalk. And apparently, and that was an activity being run by Greenways to School, and it didn't go as planned. And so, consequently, that was a missing activity in that area. Another challenge that we had was, and by the way, I would have, you know, the bicycle rodeo was a very, is a very fun thing to watch and draws a lot of attention. And I, in hindsight, I would have stuck the rodeo on San Jose Avenue because that would have definitely enlivened and better utilized that space. Some of the, we also had a situation where there was a participant drop-off after about 3:00 PM. And, you know, the event started at 11:00, and it was a sunny, warm day. And I think at a certain point, potentially, it was just a lot of sun for folks and families, you know, kids start getting tired and stuff like that. So, there definitely was a draw, I noticed a drop-off, you know, after the 3:00 PM time. And also, some of our presenters, I think, started to disperse before the 4:00 PM event time, maybe because they were seeing kind of a dip in the, in the participation. So, you know, an option for the future is to look at the timeframe and may perhaps adjust it. Another, we had, you know, and this is just part of event coordinating, it was a couple of late cancellations with one of the groups that was there, a couple of groups that were scheduled to participate. And I've learned from the BIA that the passport to Capitola Village activity that they organized had mixed reviews. It wasn't a clear win and it was, you know, not a resounding success, as I think that they'd hoped. How does Capitola compare to the other Open Streets events happening in Santa Cruz County? Well, there's only been one other, which is on West Cliff Drive. Of course, this was a much more pedestrian-oriented event. The West Cliff Drive event is a two-mile-long route where people can really go on a bicycle ride if that's the, an activity that they would like to do. I also noticed that in comparison to the West Cliff event, there was just less people doing their own activity, DIY, do-it-yourself activity, like, you know, people just showing up with a guitar and sitting on the curb and just singing songs or bringing their juggling equipment, those types of just kind of, you know. And again, with Open Streets, it's really, it's a new type of event that's new to the community, that people, it's like you have to learn, well, what is Open Streets? Oh, it's a pop-up park. I bring my own, just like any park, you know, I bring my frisbee, I bring myself and my family and maybe equipment to enjoy that, that open, safe space. So, I have some recommendations. I think, I feel like there's two main options available to Capitola. And one is to repeat the event with enhancements. Provide more activities, fill up the space more, work, continue to work with the village merchants to really involve them even more. I feel like it has a lot of potential, and especially if it's branded as a, as a really kid-oriented event. That was actually one of the things that the San Jose mother that I spoke of a little while ago mentioned. She said she loved how, how kid-friendly the event was. And, you know, I'm sure that the Art and Wine, I'm not sure, I actually have not attended the Art and Wine Festival, but, you know, maybe that's a more adult-oriented event, I'm not sure. But, anyway. And then, the, another option is really to just kind of create a non-event esplanade closure that really just simply creates a pop-up park, but with providing greenery, tables, chairs, shade, just an inviting place where people wanna come hang out in, you know, this beautiful coastside area. And I just, I wanna share a couple of pictures. These are called Parklets. They're alternative uses of parking spaces where it's, you know, you take a little piece of the street and you, you make it into a neat place to hang out. And I also happen to be, I was born in Belgium, have mostly grown up in the United States, and these are some photographs from my hometown of Antwerp. And you'll see that, as in many European cities, there's a lot of pedestrian-only plazas that have just oodles and oodles of outdoor terraces for people to, nobody wants to sit inside, even in winter. It's really interesting. It's amazing to me what people, the weather that people will put up with. But in any case, just, I feel like there's a really wonderful opportunity for the City of Capitola and in the esplanade to create more of this type of environment. So, that could be something that could be piloted, you know, in a, in kind of a non-event pop-up park kind of option. So, again, I just wanna really thank you for the opportunity. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Saskia. Other questions? Mike? Seeing none. Let me ask if there's members of the public that would like to address the council on Open Streets, open mic. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the open mic and we'll bring it back for council discussion on the Open Streets event. And Dennis, why don't you lead off?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Saskia for the great work she did in putting this together. It was a major event and coming from the outside, there was a plus in that. And that, she worked tirelessly to put this together and I think that she's shown in Santa Cruz and here that she can make these type of events successful and a family event. And I think that was the key to this whole thing. Everyone got to experience what it's like to go down on a sunny day on the esplanade, experience what that village can be really like without having to negotiate automobiles, particularly with the opening of our, of our new parking garage. And with 82% of the people either walking or riding their bike to that village and the parking, all the parking lots being full, that's something to say here. That was a lot of people that came in the village. And so, if you take the statistical information that was collected here, which was really valuable, if you have 6,500 people down there and 32% of them are from Capitola, that means there's 2,000 Capitola people down in that village. There's never, ever a time that there's 2,000 people from Capitola down that village, with the exception maybe of the Begonia Festival. So, this was the largest draw ever done of community in our, in our, in our village, if not in the whole community as a whole. 99% of the people who were surveyed said this event should happen again. Is that telling us something? That's really telling us something. This is something that we need to do on a regular basis and that we certainly need to do it in coordination with major events that we have in the village. There seemed to be a conflict of a survey taken between the firm and the BIA on responses from, from the merchants, and I'm respectful of both of those. The final analysis by the BIA, I was a little confused on who did it because it doesn't have a name on it, it just says the BIA. So, I'm expecting the president of the BIA took care of this. I went around the village yesterday on my own and I went to, I went to 13 businesses. I went to 13 businesses in the, in that community and the major, the major players there. And I couldn't find one, one business that didn't say, "Bring this thing back again." There made me concerns about how many times we do it and the way it's coordinated, and being this is the first time we learned a lesson with this. And there was, there was some concerns about ADA parking, there were concerns about dead spaces and the timing of it. But in all, for a first event, I think it went really, really, really well. And so, some of the responses that I received from, from, from the merchants, where I'll give you an example, is Amy from Hot Feet. She's felt we should close the whole esplanade down on a permanent basis during the, during the summertime. And that, the great thing for her was, she says, "I had a good sales day. I didn't have a great sales day, but what, what it gave me, exposed, exposed me to a lot more people than I never, that I never would have had in front of my store," and a different group of people, particularly local people. Chuck Hammers from Pizza My Heart, who actually was down there with his family during the, during the event, praised the city for doing what they did. He thinks that should be a regular event down in the city. So, with 99% of the respondents and a good percentage of, of the merchants down there saying that we should do this again, I think this city should be working towards making this a lasting, long-term program that we, that we deal in. If anyone's been to downtown Campbell in the last... If, if anyone's been to downtown Campbell in the last five years, they take in a downtown area like ours, not, not much different from it. And they close it one day a week. They have a farmer's market and a craft fair down the middle of the boulevard and they close both ends of the streets. And everyone's successful, all the businesses along the side, the, the restaurants have now pulled onto their sidewalks, they pulled seating areas, they've, they've, they've made, even bringing in a fusion of a different economics, they've made both, both the local, the local merchants and the, the visiting merchants both successful. What we have in the village right now, it appears to me, is, is, in many ways, we're sterile. In other words, we, we don't allow street vendors, we don't allow the merchants to pull their wares out into the street. We have a two-hour parking limitation that's really damaging. And, and we don't, and we don't, we don't promote fun, family things. And I'm going to read one thing before I stop here, and it's from the... Let's find it. This is from, this is from the BIA Goals and Objectives. And this, this event we had fits right into our goals and objectives, what it says in here. And this is what we're proving as a city, as a support group for the BIA. It says, "Provide fun, family-oriented events throughout the year emphasizing and tributes of the village and the work by, by working in partnership with Capitola and, and Capitola SoCal Chamber of Commerce." And that's exactly what that, that, that event did. It drew 2,000 people down into our village who are local residents and allowed them to use the land they pay for and that they own. And so, that is the success of this event. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dennis. Who's next? Anyone? Mike?
I liked this event. I think we have to keep in mind it was the first time we did it. There are going to be things to tune up and to make it better. I think it can be made better. I like the fact that the organizer listened to the BIA's comments afterwards. I would like a little more outreach and inclusiveness by future organizers with regard to the businesses, the different city committees and functions, just make it a little more robust. The only way we can make it more robust is to bring more people in and get them involved. As an aside, we have the largest pop-up place in the county and it's called our beach. People do everything you described every day here. Let's not minimize that. I liked the idea of the day without the cars there and it was very nice and relaxed and wonderful. Again, more things on San Jose, more things at the entrance to the esplanade. It was a little vacant until you got several hundred feet in. So it didn't give the appearance anything was happening, it looked abandoned. I knew it was there and, you know, to get slightly cosmic, there was definitely a gentler vibe as I walked from my house to the village. It was different than what I usually feel, which is, you know, pulse rising and things, I don't know, maybe it's just 1,000 people looking for a parking space. Well done, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mike. Stephanie?
I heard good things about it. I'm just curious to know how all the delivery trucks got in if we closed it by six, because there's so many delivery trucks that get in there, you know, by six, seven, eight.
I was there at seven o'clock that morning and there weren't any delivery trucks that were turned away. Certainly, so I think the restaurants just get their deliveries done, maybe the night before, the day before, and, and plan for it accordingly, but...
Okay. If I may, I can answer that question. As I said, I went door-to-door on the esplanade to all the businesses, and one of the questions I asked them was, "Do you have any deliveries expected on that day?" And if so, it was noted and the police got that information so that they could let in appropriate vehicles like delivery trucks.
Thank you.
Mike, did you have a follow-up?
Are we looking for a motion to plan for this event next year, or is it just receiving the report?
Well, I think the recommended action is to receive the report, and I think the staff is looking for some general mood or sense so that they could, you know, maybe anticipate where we may want to go, and so...
I'm in a good mood about it.
Okay.
I'll put that out. And just as an aside, you know, talking about cars going through the village, I watched today a 40-foot tractor-trailer coke delivery truck go through the village three times looking for a place to pull over at 2:00 PM. I know maybe there's...
It must have been new.
I was dazzled by the maneuvering the first time and I said, "Oh, you got out, good, I figured you did the delivery." Then I watched them circle again. I don't think we have any 40-foot tractor-trailer parking spaces that would become available at any time, no matter how many times you went through it, just FYI.
Yes, Ed.
Just a couple of comments. I, I want to echo what Councilman Termini said. I, I think we have to recognize first and foremost, our biggest draw in the esplanade is the beach. I, I'm not sure, I spent personally four and a half hours down that day. I got there at 11:30 and I didn't leave until, after, quite after 3:00, when it started to drop off. I walked to the parking, both parking lots, monitoring how many cars were in the parking lot, checking the people. If there were 6,000 people down there, 4,000 of them were on the beach. I think what we do is we draw people to our beach. There were activities, I think people were engaging in them. I, I met with the BIA a week after that at their meeting. The, the, the mood from the BIA was this was not a negative event, they would like to see it improved. I think that's the main thing, is that if we do this again, we, you know, it, it has legs, we can make it into a better event. I don't want to overhype the beginning of it, I, I think people were reluctant about receiving it. I, I don't want to say that anybody was negative about it. I never felt like I got a vibe like anybody wanted to make this a regular event. I think the vibe was, we do a car show, we do a Begonia Festival, Art and Wine, absolutely we can do a open streets, you know, we can acknowledge this, we can open, we can shut down the village for a day, we can let people wander through. That was the sense I got from the people that I talked to, the businesses I talked to. And like I said, it, it seemed to me like the numbers were, were like Mike said, they're on our beach. And sometimes what people will do, and like you mentioned, the family that came from San Jose, people will find a way to park anywhere and make the way to our best asset, which is our beach. But with that being said, I would, you know, I think the, the feeling in the village from the BIA was this event worked, you know, like almost anything that's organized will work, and I think that's our line. I think we've turned down a couple permits for, I think one time we wanted to do was a St. Patty's Day parade that wasn't organized and we turned down that permit. And I think if, if somebody comes in with an organized event and they're willing to put some energy behind it, I, I think we should continue to support that. So that's, that's my, my take on it.
Thank you, Ed. And I, I, it was a wonderful event. I think the survey results reflect that everyone really enjoyed it. It was really such a wonderful community experience to be able to go down and just experience that open space, gather with your neighbors and have, have fun in the streets and watching all the children and watching all the activities. And so, I think it's something that the city should continue and make an effort to do. I think there's more, you know, I mean, it's a combination of community building and, and encouraging economic vitality and also increasing the quality of life and trying to supplant, you know, the, the vehicles with more space for people. Since we have now built a second park at great, parking lot, Lot Two, at great expense, it seems that we now have more opportunity and the ability to create what was described as pop-up parks. You know, our long-term goal was to have that Parking Lot Two be a park, but maybe we don't need to wait until that can happen and the cost of a parking structure, but we can use that expanded parking space and have people park there and have more opportunity to close the esplanade at, I think, strategic times. Now, I also, I mean, during the discussions we had, when it came up about discussing the fireworks, I mean, I got a sense from some residents that they're kind of getting event fatigue. And so I think it's something that we should be aware about, creating more just events with activities. I don't know if they reflect that just, that of just closing the esplanade so that people can have room to congregate, room to maneuver and, and meet with their neighbors and, and play adjacent to the beach. And I would, I mean, I'm thinking that when we have already established events such as the Begonia Festival, maybe that's the time to look at closing the esplanade. To me, it would make more sense to have that, since we have so many people that come already into the village, that creates more space for people. And it would also attract, draw more, more of those people to go near the businesses in the esplanade instead of, you know, just being on the bridge and up the road and, and maybe they would hang out longer, because I think that's one of, what one of the survey results indicated, that's, they said that they stayed longer in Capitola because of the open streets events. So maybe it should be tied to something like the Begonia Festival. Not a new event, just creating more space, more atmosphere, more room for people to enjoy themselves. And I'm also thinking we've already approved doing a fireworks show, maybe it should be adjacent to that activity. Seem like just from a matter of public safety, it may be worthwhile to accommodate, you know, the large crowds that are going to come in any event. So those are my thoughts about it. I think it's overall, it's wonderful, I think that the council should keep it on its radar and try to find, and direct staff to try to find good opportunities to have it happen again. So those, those are my feelings about it. Yes, Dennis?
A good, a good statement, Sam. And, and the two, the two events that we have that we brought up certainly are public-friendly to do that, in that one is the Begonia Festival, anyway, experience going down there with a number of events that go on, on that Sunday, to close that esplanade does nothing but take a bunch of parked cars out of there, that's all it does. It doesn't, and it brings room, more room for people, for both for enjoyment of the festival, but also for merchant use. And then on the other hand, the fireworks display, you really don't want cars down there. You want people, if people are going to reserve it, that's a good place to reserve it from. And so those two days, and they don't have to be advanced, all they have to do is we just have to close off one end of the esplanade and, I know, mark it beforehand, but close it, close it down, and, and, and the cars as they leave, there's a two-hour limit in there and to take, to take those out of there. So, I follow it with you, Sam, both those events I think are warned of, of us looking at for, for future closure.
Well, I mean, if, I wonder if the council is willing to just maybe have staff look at the feasibility of, of doing that for those two events and come back to us? I mean, I, I know there's issues of timing and a lot of logistics and so... So, I mean, does staff want to stop us now, or...
Well, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
And stop us.
From a staff perspective, I mean, I guess it's depending on what kind of, you know, the event we're putting off. We're just closing the streets and letting something, something else happen, that's probably pretty straightforward. You know, as Saskia pointed out, she had over 700 hours that was paid for by the Regional Transportation Commission to organize an event that was here. Staff spent another probably 200 hours on this event. So, if we're going to do an event like this, we need to talk about budgeting for that kind of thing and where that funding is going to come from. If we're talking about just closing the street again, I think we can come back, you know, have some discussions with the Begonia Festival and, and the merchants and all that and come back on a report with that. So truly, your direction at this point that we're looking for.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Stephen.
I may be in favor of both of these, and I think that with regard to the fireworks, we may want to close through traffic in the interest of public safety on that night for a couple of hours before the fireworks start, might be a good idea. Begonia Festival, we have to talk to the festival people, we already closed the bridge during the, during the flows, but I think in either case, it needs to be fleshed out and brought back so the public can weigh in on this.
Yes, no, I agree. And, and I'm, well, just to let you know, Stephen, I'm, I'm not thinking about organizing additional activities sponsored by the city. I mean, it could be an opportunity for the Begonia Festival Committee, they have a bigger palette, the BIA now, if they were aware of it, maybe they could organize something, but not for us. Our role would just be to close it off and, and make sure it's a safe and clean environment for that limited period of time. So, and, and, and so maybe, I mean, in the sense of direction to staff, if you guys want to, if you will take that and maybe look at it, and I would say it probably should come back to us relatively soon. And we can notice the BIA, let them know it's going to be on the agenda for more fleshed-out discussion and analysis to see if that's a feasibility. And Chief, I know you, we will want to weigh in as well at that time. But maybe let's look at those two events, the Begonia Festival and the fireworks that are coming up, and, and see if that's a possibility.
Got it.
Okay, any other thoughts from council members? Okay, so, I'll, I'll maybe ask one more time if there's any member of the public that would like to comment on what they've heard here from the council. I thought maybe that would be...
We could inspire her ultimately. Prodding, it was prodding.
I, I think, you know, I think you summed it up pretty well as far as most of the businesses are like, "It was fine, you can do it again." I'm, I'm not sure, you know, when you look at, I, I don't know, there's that balance of, do we really want people to come to the beach? Do we really want people to come from out of the area? I, I can't really get a good read. Is it, is it all just for the, the people who, who, you know, live really close by? Because that's, that's Labor Day weekend. And, you know, that is a lot of parking places because you have to block off so much of the village in order to have the one section that you want to have open, open. And I, I'm not saying I'm in favor or not in favor, I'm just, it's so, it's so unfortunate and so complicated that you have to block off so much of the village. I mean, some of the people who live down there, they love the peace and quiet unless they were trying to find a place to park by their house, and they've already had to deal with that normally on the weekend, but this just made it that much worse because then they couldn't go to Pacific Cove because it was already full. You know, so there, I, I think, you know, I don't know, it's a very complicated issue. But I, I mean, I think the, the businesses, you know, Molly's email was pretty scathing towards the, the business people, you know, you know, get the hell out of my village kind of a thing. But I think they were mostly pretty supportive of the event, just the reasonableness of having it, you know, saying, "Oh, well, let's close off the village every Sunday." Some of these events, and I think there is event fatigue, and some of these events, like with the car show, we, you know, it's not a very good weekend retail-wise. Do we say, "You shouldn't have it?" No, we don't. But I will say that most of our sales occur after the car show was over and the cars left. That's, so if you're talking about, you know, what helps? Well, it helped when the cars went away and people could come and park and do what they wanted to do, go to the restaurants or go to the shops. So, in the case of the open streets, if, if the event had started earlier when the streets were closed off very early, and if the event had started earlier, then you wouldn't have had that participant fatigue where everybody wanted to go, you know, were ready to go home. I mean, with people with little kids, they want to be down there at 10:00 and they want to go home at 1:00 and have a nap. And, you know, so I mean, I think there's really a lot of details, just saying, you know, we're just going to put up a barricade every Sunday at the beginning of the esplanade on San Jose Avenue, you know, I, I'm not sure that's really fair, it, it's kind of like sending two messages, you know? Do we want people to come to Capitola and have a good time and enjoy our beach, or do we not? I, I, you know, I don't know, do we want businesses down there or do we not? So I think it's very complicated, and sometimes I feel like it's just a little arbitrary up here. "Oh, this was fun, let's do it again this day and this day." And as far as merchants participating more, you do have to consider that we, a lot of us don't have staff and we can't radically change what we do, like, I, I, I mean, I worked that day, I, I worked that whole weekend. I didn't have another person to go out and go down onto the esplanade and try and do something to drum up business to come to my, I just didn't have the, I didn't have the manpower. Amy had a great day because they had a sidewalk sale, and everybody who had a sidewalk sale did pretty well, and I think that's great. But not every business, even though you say, "Oh, well, if you'd had a sidewalk sale, you would have done great." Well, some people have valid reasons for not being able to do some of this stuff. And so we can't be made to feel bad about that. I mean, those are... I mean, those are business decisions, it's very small businesses, and sometimes we have limitations. So I think the whole thing is a little bit more complicated, and I'm not really sure what the answer is, because you can't get a lot of merchants to come to a meeting to talk about it. And, you know, I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think that a little bit of fine-tuning will help it, and I think it's an event that should go on, and I think that's what the majority of the people down in the village feel. But I'm not sure that they feel it should go on 52 Sundays a year, or, you know, something like that. So I really would hope that we can get, I don't know how exactly how to get a better dialogue going, but I hope we can have some on fine-tuning what's already going on. And it may be really interesting to do, to just put a barricade up and do nothing, as you've suggested, Sam. Don't do anything, don't put any tables out there, don't do anything else, and see what happens. You know, maybe that's the answer, is just put a barricade up, and then, you know, maybe people will really, you know, they'll, that'll give a true feeling of how, does it really feel like a park, or does it feel like an empty parking lot?
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
I think this is a great, unique opportunity, and it's like just the last speaker said, it's going to be fine-tuned. So as in any new situation, we'll find out ways to take advantage of it. So I enjoyed it. I saw people I hadn't seen for a long time. It was great. I really liked it a lot. And the story about the kids having a barrel of laughs, or whatever, Dennis, you said, I mean, I think as the word spreads, people start coming to this unique opportunity. And as we have more opportunities, more events like this, we'll find out ways to make it work for Capitola in a unique way. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Jean. Anyone else? Now, I'm going to close the microphone. I think we've had our discussion, we've given direction to staff, so we'll move on now to the next item on the agenda. This is Item 10D, which is to consider applying for the World Surfing Reserve status for Capitola and submitting a letter of inquiry. And just the recommended action is to have a discussion on the proposal and to provide direction to staff. And I know, Sammy, it's also to approve the submission of a letter of inquiry to, and actually, that would go to Save Our Waves organization. So is there a short staff report on the item?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a short staff report. The World Surfing Reserve, WSR, was founded in 2009 by a group of surfers and environmentalists, and is operated by Save the Waves Coalition, and it's intended to designate and preserve outstanding wave surf zones and their surrounding environments around the world. Recently, the Santa Cruz coastline north of us became the fourth officially designated surfing reserve in the world. There was a summit held recently, which I believe, Mr. Mayor, you attended.
Right, yes.
And the process by which Capitola could be designated a surfing reserve would be to submit a letter of inquiry to Save the Waves if the council was interested in taking that step. To be clear, staff has no recommendation on this matter. It's certainly a matter simply of council discretion, if you would like us to submit such a letter of inquiry. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Other questions?
Will it cost us anything?
No, the letter of inquiry does not cost us anything.
No. After we inquire, do we know enough about this to know what we're getting into? I am reluctant to, I feel a community grant creeping up on me, and I don't want to look behind me too quickly.
I cannot guarantee that there's not a community grant behind this, ultimately. Nothing I have seen so far suggests a monetary contribution if an entity does become a World Surfing Reserve. I will note that the Santa Cruz Reserve to the north was spearheaded by local nonprofits. The City of Santa Cruz and the County of Santa Cruz passed resolutions in support of their efforts to have the area designated, but it wasn't spearheaded by the jurisdictions to our north.
Another question for you. If you had the ability to turn the clock back 30 years, and someone asked you to vote on whether we should have a coastal commission or not, would you vote in favor of it?
I'll take the fifth on this, Mr. Councilman.
Okay. And I'm just, I'm wondering if this is moving us into
I would.
yet another, I would be more careful about it, about the formation, but that's just me. I want to be careful that we're not signing on to impose restrictions that the City of Capitola and its citizens would be uncomfortable with. I think our sanctuary is vibrant, strong, and has a steady, even hand when it comes to control of the activities in the Monterey Bay, and I feel very comfortable with it.
Certainly, from a regulatory standpoint, I think we probably live in one of the most regulated stretches of coastline in the world. Whether this introduces a new layer of review, you know, they're a non-regulatory body, would they start to comment or take a keener interest in our projects? I don't know. I can't guarantee it. But obviously, we have, you know, between the coastal commission, state lands, and the sanctuary, we certainly have a high degree of scrutiny and regulatory oversight for anything we want to do in our waters.
If I could just maybe clarify about the process, and yeah, it's true, I went to the World Surfing Reserve, and there was summit, and there was a little bit of discussion here about Capitola joining the World Surfing Reserve, which currently has been designated, runs from about Long's Marine Lab to just past the Hook. Privates, you know, Hoopers, the First Break, Bombora are not part of the reserve. And so, you know, I think there was some thought about trying to join that other stretch of surf break. And it is about, I mean, this group and the purpose of this is to focus attention on the surf break. And yeah, there may be people advocating, if we were going to put in a new jetty along there, they may come speak to that, about how it may affect the surf break. So I think that that's certainly a possibility. What we're talking about here is, and just to be clear about the process, is the submission of a letter of inquiry, and there are certain minimum criteria that they look at. If you meet them, they'll invite us to submit a full proposal, which would take some staff time to complete it. And then there's a World Surfing Reserve Committee, they vote on whether or not you qualify, and you're in or you're out with the rest of the surf breaks along the coast. So there's no money involved in this process. It's not a regulatory agency, they can't mandate anything, but they advocate for the surf. And so it is a tension, and I think that having our surf join, really, some of the premier world surfing areas, you know, just, you know, north of us.
Do we have to do this by a certain date?
No, there's no particular date.
Maybe can we continue this? And I'll be glad to do some outreach and get a little more information about the organization and bring it back. We'll just continue to the next meeting.
What does a letter of inquiry do? Just what Stephanie said she was going to do? I mean, I want to try and really clarify exactly what we're doing. I don't want to make an application to a club that I don't know anything about, but I'm feeling like it's part, you know, passive organization and part private surf club, kind of a secret handshake thing. I want to, I want to be real careful. Does letter of inquiry just give us information?
My understanding is it's the first step in an application process. It's more than just getting information on the group.
It tells you whether you're invited. Yeah, you'll get more information, and it'll tell you whether you apply.
I don't want to apply, I mean, that word "apply" kind of concerned me. Can we just have more information brought back to us?
Let me get more information to see whether we want to apply, and I'll bring that back at the next meeting.
Okay. Sure. Dennis?
Having been my home break for 30 years, I know every peak, all the way through this area, from Pleasure Point particularly. And Pleasure Point is continuation of a break all the way to New Brighton. In fact, the best break, if you know this area in a big day, New Brighton is by far the best break of the whole stretch there, but it takes a big day. But when you talk about Pleasure Point, and you talk about the continuation, really, Pleasure Point goes from Sewer Peak, or which would be 26th Avenue break on the backside there, Little Wind and Sea, it goes all the way to New Brighton. And so what this does, you know, I'm fine with looking at everything, it does, it makes that whole section of that break into one hand, is what it does. And it should be part of the same thing. And so I think that's where it came from. I thank you, Sam, for bringing this forward and looking into it, but I'm fine with looking at this further. We already have our hands tied with everything we do with the coastal zone anyway. You can't change a jetty down there without coastal commission approval, and probably you'll never get that. So we already have our hands tied with what we're doing. So, anyway, it should be, it should be under the same arm, not just part of that, of that point.
Okay. Is there?
Just a couple of comments. I kind of agree with Mike. I mean, I'm a little skeptical about it also. I think, well, we just talked about it with the streets and access, I think that if you were to ask most people in Capitola, they wouldn't want to advertise the break. They wouldn't want to increase the amount of surfing in our town. I think we have a private little surf break that people enjoy, and they just as soon leave it that way. I see it as a redundancy. I think the Monterey Bay Sanctuary protects us from everything through Ambag, that organization, everything we need. I'm almost like, I don't want to engage into a process that I don't really think is going to, it's kind of like, what's in it for us in Capitola? I don't really see anything. So I would, you know, at a minimum, I would hope we could have just accepted Stephanie's proposal to just table it and look into it and get some more research about the organization.
Your hand, Stephanie.
All right. Is there a motion to continue?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is a second. Before I call for the vote, any member of the public want to address the council on the item?
Mayor, council members, thanks for opening this up, and I bring this to my attention. I actually reviewed the both Save Our Waves and the World Surfing Reserve, and found it quite intriguing and interesting enough that I joined as a member myself. But having said that, I kind of am skeptical, again, for the city to be involved, and I'll tell you why. Two things. One is, from a standpoint of really what Save Our Waves and the World Surf Reserve stands for, is really trying to protect those environments, and if you look at them outside of the city of Santa Cruz, over the Santa Cruz coastline, are those areas that can be intruded on by people who want to build and get into areas that maybe don't have the political bodies and what we have with the Monterey Bay Sanctuary to protect their shores. So from that point, I agree with you folks that the regulatory component of it is already in place, and they would have a pretty much a tough time doing that. Secondly, the World Surfing Reserve, it has four criteria to become, to meet that area. And I think maybe we could have slid under the scope of the coastline from Pleasure Point down, but, you know, really, once you get to Hoopers and you get that south-facing shore that we have, it kind of changes the waves. And by the way, I don't know how, I hope, I was hoping to see a lot of young surfers here, and maybe, I was only one that got word of this, but I represent a very small of the older and slower people who happen to call Capitola Surf Break their home, but I'm sure others would be interested in being involved in this process. But we may have been able to fall under some of the criteria with Santa Cruz, is they went all the way down basically to Pleasure Point, or, I'm sorry, the Hook. Our wave is a little bit different. One, it's not as consistent, especially Hoopers and what you get over outside of the First and Second Jetty there. But we are unique. We have the kelp beds that you have to paddle through. That criteria, we probably could fall, and one of the four criterias there. So I don't know that we would meet it. I'm not necessarily against the application process. I did read further and do a little research, and there's always that, there's always a money tied to this, right? And if you look at what, at the end of this thing, you end up putting together a, they call a local stewardship commission, or council, local stewardship council, and that council really kind of is the local representation of your surf break that becomes part of the World Surf Reserve, but there's a bigger body that looks at that. And I have two concerns. One is, are we abdicating our role of protecting our area to a larger body, where we have another body to have to jump hoops through if we want to do something here? And I bring that, something that we did together as a local community, was the surf school regulations. Would that make us have to be part of a larger group, a body, to jump through hoops and put something like that through, one? Two is, there is a financial tie at the end of this to look at supporting the long-term part of the World Surf Reserve, according to their own web pages. So I would caution us on that. I'm, you know, like I said, I support what they do. I joined, I became a member, and I'd be happy to be part of the community if they wanted to look further into it.
Thank you, TJ. So we have a motion, a second. Can you continue this item? Assuming nobody else wants to speak on it? Seeing none, I'll call back. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Stephanie, for looking into it and reporting back to us.
And, Mr. Mayor, I do want to indicate just to the councils where our next agenda is full, is we'll be bringing the general plan back, so this will be coming back in July.
Well, yeah, have it come back when we're ready to.
Want to, you want us to wait until you're back? How about the first meeting in August? Is that?
Yeah.
You have plenty of time.
Okay.
Lastly, this brings us to Item 10E, which is the destination of voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Los Angeles, California, September 3rd to 5th, 2014. We just need to confirm the voting delegate and an alternate, it's my understanding.
I'll nominate Stephanie Harland as our member.
Second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone in the public wants to speak on the motion? Seeing none? That motion passes unanimously. So next, we have the question of an alternate. Is there anyone who desires to be an alternate? Alternate? Alternate?
Does the alternate go to a different location or something?
An alternate location?
I'll be Stephanie's alternate. I know she'll make it, but I
You go to the same location, and so Ed is volunteering to be an alternate?
I'm volunteering to be an alternate.
Okay.
Be careful where they send you.
Stephanie's going everywhere.
You know, it's not the most exciting location, but it'd probably be a really interesting conference.
Okay.
Downtown LA, the LA Convention Center.
I'm counting on you going, Stephanie.
Is there a motion to approve Ed as the alternate?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to the end of the meeting. Any final comments? Yes, Stephanie?
I forgot to mention, I met with representatives from the county's Tobacco Education Coalition last week, and they were happy that we have taken steps in the right direction, and they're going to be coming up with more suggestions for us and working with the police department. And they're, the whole issue of the vapes, the vapor, so forth, and I said that we were going to be looking into that with our city attorney that was going to be working with the city of Santa Cruz. So, anyway, that'll be an ongoing process, but that'll be interesting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any others? Hearing none, now we'll adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, June 19th, 2014, in the city hall chambers. Thank you, everyone, and good night, Capitola.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a successor agency agenda?
Yes. I've adjourned the regular city council meeting, and I will open up the successor agency agenda, which is right here to my left. And so we'll begin with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harland?
Here.
Councilwoman Norton?
Here.
Councilmember, actually, board member, Batorf?
Here.
Board member Termini?
Here.
Chair Story?
Still here. Next, I'll ask for any public comments. You might want to speak to the successor agency, to the former Capitola Redevelopment Agency. Seeing none, I'll close the public comments. General government, under general government, the first item is to consider adopting a resolution approving the proposed 2014-15 fiscal year budget for the City of Capitola General Fund and the Capitola Successor Agency and the Capitola Improvement Budget. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution. This would be a replication of the staff report we have earlier. I think we won't repeat that. If everybody recalls the report that Tori gave, unless it's any member of the public that wishes to address the successor agency on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close that and bring it back to the council for deliberation.
I will move
Or, I hope, in action. Yes.
I will move the recommended action of adopting the budget for fiscal year 1415 as a successor agency.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, seconded by Councilmember Norton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.